Call to order and establish recording at seven P M. Monday, June sixteenth. Call to, uh, roll call, Jam?
Here.
Amy?
Here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Jared is joining us by phone call today. Deesha?
Here.
If he isn't.
Can you give him a call? See if you can get a hold of him.
He said he's, he's traveling to East Texas and there's a chance.
Chance he won't be able to get to it.
Yeah, said try again in a little bit if he's out breaching.
All righty, let's do, do it after.
The pledges though. Will you all join us for the pledges, please?
I pledge the flag of the United States of America. And each and every republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. A pledge of allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Will you all join us for prayer, please?
Father God, thank you for this opportunity to come together. We pause today to recognize that you are the source of all of our blessings, our wealth and our goodness. And for that, we are grateful. Be with these city leaders, guide them, immerse them in your wisdom. So this city can grow. You can help me. Please heal those who are sick and feed those who are hungry. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. We're going to move on to mayor announcements. Feeding Fannin will be held at July first, twenty twenty five.
Hello, are you wearing a speaker?
The next regular city council meeting will be held on July twenty first at seven P M. City Hall will be closed on Friday, June twentieth in observation of Juneteenth. The city hall will be closed Friday, July fourth in observation of July fourth. The fireworks will be on, fireworks will be held on the square at dusk. The Lake Ralph Hall zoning meeting will be at City Hall on July fifteenth at five thirty P M. Move on to citizen comments. We don't have any citizen comments. Moving on to administrative agenda. Alpha. Minutes of May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting. I don't know. I don't see any, uh. Yeah, I don't see any mistakes. This looks good to me.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. We move to accept the minutes for May nineteenth as is. Moving on to minutes of June fourth, twenty twenty five, special meeting.
Some, we did a motion, you put out on my, my last page.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Motion, Amy, the second team.
I don't. Yeah, I don't know how to do that.
Jared, I'm going to put you on mute until you have something to say.
Yeah, I don't know how you do that.
Okay.
I don't.
Or no, you're gonna, you're gonna have to mute yourself.
Yeah. That's why, I was like, how is she doing?
Say something then speak up or unmute and talk.
I thought she had a better phone than me.
So we don't pick up all the back sides.
I don't see anything wrong with this one either.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure nobody had any.
Yeah.
Issues with six B. When we talked about the permit changes, but. I didn't have any corrections.
Yeah, because it says with no markup at the end, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as a. Sweet operation programs with projections with no markup made process. Yeah, I think that works.
And you did receive the markup I made on the PDF?
Can you give us a, another chart so we can see it?
Yeah, I'll hand it. Yes. Uh, I'll, I'll get it. Uh, I'll have to get it corrected.
That's fine.
But it's the same one I just took out the forty percent.
Right, I just want to.
Yeah, I'll get it corrected, I'm sorry. I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the special meeting Wednesday, June fourth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. We move to approve the, uh, minutes from special meeting of June fourth, twenty twenty five. Moving on to accounts payable for June, twenty twenty five.
On the May one, there was a seven hundred and twenty-five to Bureau Veritas that y'all had questions about. And I apologize, I wasn't here to answer. Uh, that was a fire, uh, inspection for a fire suppression system. Um, I was able to take the inspection off because once later we found out that they don't need the, the permit from us. They did pay for the permit review, which was three hundred dollars. And we're taking off the inspection fee, so we, we don't, it didn't cost us anything. Uh, Opportunity's taking care of that. And it turned out to be three hundred dollars. And then there was a seventy-six twenty-six that is another inspection that's, uh, for someone, something else, so.
Do you have a microphone, or please?
I'm sorry. There you go. Sorry about that.
Can y'all hear her better now?
There was a seven hundred and twenty-five on last month's that was for Bureau Veritas. Uh, that was for a fire inspection and found out later that they don't need that fire inspection. Uh, or the permit actually from us because they're not in the city limits. They did pay for the plan review, which was three hundred dollars since we had had that done. Um, and then the four hundred and twenty-five was taken off since they won't be having the inspection. They'll be going a different route for that. Uh, and then there was a seventy-six ninety-two that was a separate inspection that has been, uh, billed for this month. So that's where that three seventy-six ninety-two came from.
Um. We have Fannin County clerk, which we did the elections. What is the?
Yes, we had it marked down for nine thousand and I found out that was not actually the bill. That was just their estimate. The actual bill came out to six thousand two hundred and eighty-eight seventeen.
Okay, what is the five thousand nine eight, ninety-eight thirty for Fannin County precinct through?
That is road materials. It'll come out to fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And I don't have the TXU bills yet, so they're estimated what they typically are.
Is this the first payment to Hankins East of Deacon?
Uh, no. There's been. There's been two or three others. Yes. I think there was a twelve and two fives and then this one.
I'll just ask Lisa or Mr. Mayor, did you guys see anything on any, any of the AP or payables items that you have any concerns about?
Did I have anything? No. Um, there's.
I mean, you guys get to, y'all, y'all actually see the invoices and the bills are attached.
No, I go through them very carefully. Data Mac shows two months and that's because last month, uh, actually there was two months we didn't get a bill. I contacted them, they said, oh, no, you're all up to date. You don't know anything. Well, then I get a call and says, why have you not paid your bill? You're four months behind. Uh, so, um, we got it sorted out. I'll pay two months this month, two months next month, and they will not charge the late fees because they gave me the wrong information. So. I was not happy. Luckily, I kept the email where they told me we did not owe anything and we got it sorted out.
I know that this Second Street sewer mishap, you said Pat's pump was involved in that?
Yes, that was three hundred dollars.
Did we pay that already?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It's on this bill. Oh, I thought it, well, may, no, we may have paid it last month. It's not on this one, it was on last month's. Yes, they, we had to use their, uh, back truck. And they gave us a really good price out of it considering it was on the weekend after hours and. I don't think they charged us for the extra trip. They came out and couldn't do anything.
I don't see anything.
Any neighborly of them?
No, we did pay that pass for last month.
Okay.
Thank you, I was thinking we did. And this is all the bills I had as of today. And I went through and the ones that we usually pay are all included, so I don't think I missed anything this time. I did miss one and I apologize because I got a bill today for two hundred and. From City of Honey Grove. Where they're saying they billed us back in February and they did not. It's the first time I've seen the bill. And it's for three hundred and ten dollars. It was two hundred and something originally, um, that they, uh. There's like a thirty-eight dollar late fee on it and I can't find where I put the bill. It was two hundred and fifty something dollars. It's where they came out and did their, uh, jet truck. Over on Redner, which we've had to use several times. And I got a bill late this afternoon for February that. I think so, we hadn't paid yet. Come on, I know I had it in here. So I put this here just so we can. I apologize, I can't put my hands on it. It came out to three hundred and ten dollars. I believe all toll. That's City of Honey Grove. Must say this out on my desk. I thought I had it in this folder. But it's not listed on there because I just got it late this afternoon.
You gotta cut it off some time in this package. It was good generated last week, so.
Yeah.
I understand.
You said it's for three ten?
Yeah, about three hundred and ten dollars.
Well, I have a quick question, Lisa, when you're ready.
Yes.
And I think part of this. This is just a good example because we budgeted, um, thirty-nine hundred dollars for elections.
Uh huh.
This fiscal year. And so the, the amount that we're paying is sixty-two eighty-nine.
Yes.
Say. Is that, did we expect to split the costs?
No.
Or what's?
We did not expect that they were not, they were going to lose the person that programs all the equipment. And we had to pay an extra fifteen hundred dollars to program machines. And the cost of the equipment was more than it has been in the past. We based it on what the last elections had been. And they were considerably more this time.
Okay.
Now, every, when we had those meetings, everybody was absolutely flabbergasted at the cost. They do plan to have somebody hired by the time the next elections, it will be their person that will take care of all that. And, uh, the programming and stuff so that we won't, here it is. I knew I had it somewhere. It's from February.
Did each, did each, um, city have to pay that amount?
Yes. Yes. Each city had to pay the fifteen hundred dollars to have the, the machines that do the, uh, accounts and stuff. Have to be specifically programmed for each city and for each election. And that's where we had a higher. Let me find that bill and I can give you some more specifics than that.
Yeah, this is, this is just a good, simple example of the way that we try to, we try to budget money.
Yes.
But the actual sometimes just are not under our control. So I want to, I want to make sure in this case I understand. So if, if the school district had had an election in May.
Uh huh.
Would it have cost them another fifteen hundred to add their stuff? Or would it have been a?
I think that would have been in that fifteen hundred to program everything. Um, and I don't know if we split the cost with you guys when y'all have school elections.
Yeah, split.
And that may be what.
That's why we have joint elections.
Yeah, and that may be what it was because we didn't split it with anybody. It was all on us because there were no school elections. But. Uh, the equipment total was four thousand dollars. Uh, staffing for the county was sixty. Supplies and fees was another sixteen hundred. And. Equipment controller, scanner. I mean, I've got it all broken down for, because you've got your early voting plus your election day. So two thousand and fifteen for equipment for early voting, two thousand and fifteen for voting day. Another sixty for equipment ballot programming was fifteen hundred. And then all of the supplies, all the papers that we use, the ballots, everything. And it came out to six thousand two hundred and eighty-one. Oh, a service contact fee. Service contract fee of five seventy-one. Sixty-five. Are y'all okay with me adding this Honey Grove to the payables for this month? Three ten sixty-two. Okay. That'll be in the water budget.
Any other questions?
Um.
Can I get a, uh?
Motion, yes.
Motion, yes.
I make a motion that we accept the accounts payable for June, twenty twenty five. Uh, with the exception of adding the, the bill for Honey Grove for three ten sixty-two.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We approve the accounts payable with the amendment of the. Three ten sixty-two.
Three ten sixty-two.
Moving on to financial report for May, twenty twenty five.
So in the way of commentary, I'd like to ask the city secretary to summarize what the auditor. Convey to her about the number of adjusting journal entries that will be required to correct prior fiscal years.
Uh huh. Um, actually, the auditor's here if you'd like him to report. Mr. Santana? Could you give us a recap of the journal entries and the corrections that are going to have to be made for the budget? For the, uh, audit you've given us today? Just briefly. I'm sorry.
And if you wouldn't mind, sir, use that microphone there so we. Sure. Get it on the recording. Thank you.
Um, would you kind of give a recap of what you told me today about the adjustments that are going to have to be made to the, um, journal entries and the transfers of funds and that kind of stuff that you found in the audit you gave, gave us today?
Sure. Uh, first of all, uh, thank you for the opportunity, um, for inviting me to serve the city of LaDonia.
You can hear him? Can you bring your microphone? We have a, yeah.
Yes. Sorry about that. I'm a singer, so to me it's very easy to do this. So, um, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity of, uh, for serving the city of LaDonia. Uh, my name is Juan Santana, I'm a senior audit manager at Hankins East Stop. Uh, for the past couple of months, I've been, uh, working on both fiscal years, uh, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Um, as, uh, requested, uh, I had to embark into a challenging task. Of, uh, working through, uh, files that needed extensive, uh, work. Uh, there were a substantial number of, uh, journal entries that had to be, uh, booked in order to correct. Uh, the financial information, uh, starting with fiscal year twenty-three. So with that, uh, done and completed as, as of today. Then I proceeded to move to fiscal year twenty-four with a substantial reduction of the work to be performed without regards because, uh, that was previously corrected with, uh, that. Um, I found many instances where, uh, transactions were incorrectly recorded. Uh, duplicate, uh, duplicated transactions, uh, bundled deposits. Uh. Accounts, uh, cash accounts that were both recorded, uh, in both general and the proprietary funds, uh, which is the water and sewer. Um, so all of those had to be, uh, corrected. And, uh, also I had to do a bit of forensic, uh, work. That means going back in time and then coming back forward in order to, uh, understand the nature of the transactions. And then I've been able to correct them adequately moving forward. That's, uh, pretty much it. Uh, I have incurred in significant time, uh, additional time to, uh, be able to achieve that. Uh, so that's pretty much, uh, the challenge that I faced, uh, at the beginning of the audit work, basically.
Can I ask you a question? Approximately how many journal entries did you have to do? ballpark?
Uh, I would say that in twenty twenty-three, it could be more, it could be close to forty. Uh, journal entries, between journal entries and reclassifications because also there were misclassifications of, of, uh, revenues and expenditures, uh, all over the place. So that, uh, after having done that, then for fiscal year twenty-four, it was, there was a significant reduction of the journal entries because of that. Uh, sometimes when we do audits of cities and we only do one year. Sometimes we have to do significant, uh, adjusting entries, uh, because it, we are only working on one year. Uh, but in this case, since we started, uh, one year and then moved to the other simultaneously. We were able to, uh, correct the, most of the, uh, transactions that needed, uh, attention.
Any more questions?
So I just want to, let me see if I can do this succinctly. That's my challenge, never use ten words when a hundred will do it. So what, what's the probability that the financial reports that we're looking at today in fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five? Are, that are based on fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, right? What's the probability that the reports that we're looking at are one hundred percent accurate?
I would say that they are not as accurate as they should be because we need to, uh, get into the system, post the journal entries, the correcting journal entries to bring those figures forward to where they should be. That, that would be the answer to your question.
So would it be reasonable for us to approve financials based on the status of these reports right now?
On the finance, on the internal.
The balance, the balance sheets and the income statements?
That, uh, you mean not the ones that I'm providing? Because the ones that I provide are the auditor, you mean the internal?
Right, I'm talking about the ones that you haven't touched.
Hmm, well, we, um, I think that, um, Lisa and I have, uh, discussed and gone over that. And then, uh, I think that they should not be accurate because they're carrying over information that is not precise.
So what I'm getting from that is these aren't accurate and there's no way we can approve them if they're not accurate.
Well, that's my, my question to you is, I've been hesitant to recommend or to make a motion that we approve our financial statements. Because we know that they're not accurate, right? We know there are errors that have rolled forward year after year. So I don't want to make sure that I'm doing the right thing as somebody who's responsible for the finances of the community, right? So.
I believe you are.
Okay.
Well. Any, any other questions? Thank you so much.
Go on, sir.
So in light of that, I would like to once again make a motion that we table the financials for May, twenty twenty-five. Until we can get good reports out of the system based on the corrections and journal entries from our auditor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We move to table the financial reports for May, twenty twenty- We move to table the financial reports for May 2025. Moving on to information reports. Utility slash Public Works Department. Lisa, you want to lead us off here?
Alrighty. I've just kind of, kind of done bullet points. We've had a major issue at Keen and Commerce for a long time. It's been very difficult to find out what the issue was. Apparently, there was an old tee in a line that had been cut and never capped off properly. They took the tee out, put a straight line in and connected it, and that leak has finally been fixed after several months of trying to figure out what was going on. Friday, we found a sinkhole, I'm sorry, Keen and Commerce, yes. So, that leak should, you shouldn't have any more leaking there. We found a sink, literally a sinkhole at Stone and Paris on Friday afternoon. They fixed it Saturday morning. It was big enough, somebody could stand in it and be waist-deep into it and could sit down and put their legs, almost their whole body into, under the road. It was, it was a bad one. At the corner of Paris and Stone Street, there, where the road between the Baptist Church, right there. They've had a leak on Church Street that was fixed, a leak at the old cotton gin that's been repaired. They've mowed the Wells wastewater in City Hall twice this month already and it's due to be done again. Zach's been working on the tractor. He got the cylinder replaced. He's got the tractor where it's running. It's just the bucket can't be raised and lowered until he finishes doing some work on the hydraulic lines. He thinks he's found a way to repair those lines rather than having to replace them to save us money at this time. And again, now that we've got a city worker, it'll free him up a little bit to be finishing, working on that hopefully in the near future. They've changed out about five more radio meters. What they're doing is anytime they have to go out and work on a meter, they simply pull it and replace it with the radio read rather than going out and fixing one and coming back later and changing it. They're working on a 2,500-foot water extension on 3925 that a family's paying for and that'll result in two new water services. Brian met with Hater Engineering today to get started on the wastewater permit application. He's given me a list of water tests that are going to have to be done, samples that are going to have to be pulled. There's about 15 of them that are required as part of that permit process and I'll be calling SPL and asking for a quote on what those are going to cost us. We hired a new public works person last week already. If you can see, there's light in here. He's installed a light here, another one in Justin's office where he's not in the dark all the time. The AC unit's been pulled and put in Justin's office. He's been cleaning out the Ford truck and took stock of what tools are there, kind of taking note of what we don't have and what we need. The truck, he said, was absolutely nasty and he's got it where it almost looks like a city truck again. He hasn't started the tundra yet. That'll be next when he has some free time. He cleaned up the back half of the building today. He cleaned up the city council room. The area over in the yard where they had all the trash that was left from the dumpsters, he's gotten all of that cleaned up. Everything has been removed except for the furniture pieces that Republic Services will be coming to pick up. They haven't been able to pick it up because they can't get their boom truck in there without syncing up to the axle. Hopefully, in the next couple of days, it's going to dry up enough that they can get that boom in here. They tried to come Friday and I told them not to because it had been raining too much and I was afraid we'd get it stuck and tear up that property even worse than it was. So, that's what's going on with Water Works.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa. Moving on to the Volunteer Fire Department.
Alright, we have our report for May of 2025 from our fire chief, Grady Howard. In medical emergencies, they had 11. Structure fires, they had one, a grass fire, one, motor vehicle accident, one. No vehicle fires, no mutual aid and no lift assist. They had an unknown type of fire, which was one, which was a trash can. Smoke investigation, none. And they had a tree blocking the roadway. That was one of their calls. Hazmat, zero. Motorist assist, zero. The total calls and service for the LaDonia Volunteer Fire Department was 16. For the month of May, they held one business meeting and one training. Their general fund is 1,048487 and the track fund is 4,096028. And I also wanted to extend a thank you to anyone who came out to their fundraiser and participated in that because it was a huge success for the fire department. Thank you.
I would like to piggyback on that and once again reiterate that the best thing that anybody can do for the fire department is join. They are in desperate need of members.
Yes.
Moving on to the Administration Department. Lisa, you want to lead us off again?
Things I've been working on is, again, working with Mr. Santana to finish the two audits up. I've been working with Earl's Construction to get work started on the 15 East Plaza Building. They're starting work on that now. I've worked with Doug Janeway to get that permit fee taken care of. We've gotten the inspections for the coffee shop done. Working with Mr. Caldwell on the storage unit permits. Expecting to hear about from him on getting those paid so we can send it on to the next. We filed two new dog complaints with Mr. Hamilton. I did the updates on the handbook from last meeting that was changed. I'm working on updating our inventory records so I have an idea of what inventory we have on stock, where it's being used and that kind of thing. I've got all of the lists. I just haven't put them into a record and I'm working on that. And I've also been working on checking on the phones. We got the telephone for the police department. I did some checking today along with Jess' help. We can add a, the water department's always had a phone so that we can contact our water person or our public works, sorry, not water, but public works person at any time. We can add that phone. We've got, the plan I've got it on is where you can add up to four lines and we're paying 60-something now plus taxes, but if we add a second line, we get a new telephone. It'll be 104 a month to cover the two lines. That way, our public works person will have a phone so that we can contact him anytime if possible. And that's on the agenda for y'all to decide on that. But I got that information later today with the help from Brian. And then I think that's all I've got. We budgeted 125 for the police phone and was able to get it cheaper so we can get both phones for less than what we've budgeted for the police at this point.
Moving on to, thank you, Lisa. Moving on to Police Department.
Basically, the only thing news this morning, we got a date finally for our panel review. It's June 26. As soon as that's done, she will contact us to schedule an onsite inspection where they come and inspect the building and our facilities. And then we're done. That's done the 26th. I'm assuming she'll contact us a day or two later.
So, are you expecting just, I know you can't tell us, obviously you won't know, but hopefully mid-July, we can have this up and running?
I would hope so, but this is all up to the state and we've been completely waiting for over a month, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully.
Moving on to old business. Code of Ethics for the city council members?
There were some corrections that were added last month. I've gone in and made those corrections. In your packet, there's also a signature page I've included so that if y'all approve that, y'all can sign that signature page. This is pretty much the same with just the corrections that had been pointed out at the last meeting. Most of it was the page numbers and adding the chapter numbers and sections and a couple of spelling and grammar things. I wasn't aware of any other changes that needed to be made. It's kind of a code of ethics as well as a procedural manual for new staff so that they understand the rules and stuff of how things work. And just a refresher for everybody on how things get put on the agenda, how meetings are ran, that kind of thing.
I don't have a problem with it. I just am curious to know whether everybody feels like a work session might be good to sit down and actually read through this together, see if anybody has any concerns.
Drop off stuff we don't really see necessarily.
You know, I appreciate things like Robert's Rules of Order are included in this as the former governments that will be used that, that details like individual council members do not have authority to direct staff. You know, I think there's some really good things in here, but I'm only speaking for myself.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think that we could do, I think we could benefit from setting the workshop to go through this one more time before we...
And I know we'll have some conversations with Mr. Santana and after those reports come back, you want to plan to just combine that with budgetary...
Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
Alright. And I'll make a motion that we add the Code of Ethics review to a work session to include our next budget workshop.
All in favor? We move to table the Code of Ethics for city council members until the next budget workshop. Setting a commercial rate for the, for water for local businesses.
And I don't have any paperwork on that. That was just something that someone had suggested if we could come up with a formula for business owners because we've got several that are only here for a few days a week. Wanted to know if there was a way to get a, some type of a discounted water rate or something. We can't do anything about the sanitation services because we pay directly for those services. But to see if there's a way to come up with some type of formula for commercial water rates that would reflect the lack of usage for some of them that are only here once a month or so.
I do think that's a good idea, but I also don't think we should be making too many decisions when it comes to the financials until we know for sure what we got, what we don't got. But I do think that's a good idea because other towns do do that and it could be a decent incentive for new businesses to come into it.
Do you know if any of those businesses would be willing to join us for a workshop? Workshop, just a piece of it to talk about?
I'm sure they would. I'm sure they would.
What their needs are.
Yes. I think that would be an excellent idea.
Okay. Shaping up to be a long workshop. I'll also make a motion that we table item 8B and add that to our work session list.
All in favor? Alright, moving on to purchase of weed eater and chainsaw for Public Works.
I had been asked to do some other pricing on the weed eater and chainsaw. I've enclosed those prices. I did some checking. We need, not only do we need a weed eater, but we need a weed eater that has the saw head for brush clearing because we've got some areas that they've got to be doing some clearing on to be able to work on the ditches. And we also need a pole saw to be clearing the trees because we've got trees that are hanging down over the roads. So, I got a price on a combo unit. Let me find my notes real quick because I did some playing with the numbers a little bit. With advantage sales, we can do the weed eater, the chainsaw, the pole saw head and the bush blade for $1,253. If we do just the weed eater and chainsaw, it's 938 because it's a different chainsaw. At power motors, the weed eater and chainsaw was 860. They do not, they don't recommend the combo kit or don't sell the combo kit. So, their pole saw was a separate entity, so it came out to 1,600. And then Ace Hardware, the chainsaw, weed eater and bush blade was 1,176. Just the weed eater and chainsaw was 1,140. But the ones for advantage sales is a little bit more commercial grade than what Ace Hardware had. And it's 18-inch chainsaws and a straight shaft weed eater.
You got the brand names for it?
They're all steel. They're all steel. And you notice a lot of the same numbers. I tried to keep them as uniform as I could. Anybody I've talked to, and as well as experience from my husband's doing maintenance and all the people that do roadwork, most of, or not roadwork, but landscaping, most of them will recommend a steel product because it stands up to the abuse and the use of commercial grade. A lot of the others will not. I mean, you can get them cheaper, but they're not going to last to the type of use that we're looking at doing as a city. I'm sorry?
Because they also service, don't they? Doesn't advantage service?
Yes. Yes. If we have any problems with them, they'll, they can do the service on them. We did find a weed eater here. It's an Echo brand, I believe, but it needs some work on it. If they can get it running, it would be good as a secondary. But it's, it's a pretty good unit, but it's not the commercial grade that the steel is.
Well, I really hate to sound like a broken record. I don't want to sound like I just keep saying stuff, the same thing over and over again, but...
We can also justify taking this out of some of the roadwork money because they have to clear the ditches and stuff to be able to work on the roads. So... Clear the trees so they can get the ditch work in there.
Okay, so if you could, so on the advantage sales, which components of that section are we talking about?
I'm looking at the KN91 and all the parts to it. And the 519 chainsaw, I can't remember which one I priced. There's three different chainsaws. The 749 is more of a, a higher level than what we would need for our uses. The, the 271, I believe, is the one I've added in that figure. I'd have to double-check my... I've added in that figure. I'd have to double check my adding. But I believe I included that one because that was the same one that a couple other people had recommended as well for our usage when I explained to them what we were doing.
So, so it's the, so basically 520, 380, and then the three elements below, the powerhead?
Uh huh. Yeah, the powerhead is 379, then the head, the pole saw, and the brush blade, all of that's for the weed eater itself, and then the chainsaw, whichever one y'all would choose. And the 271 was recommended by all three companies.
So the, effectively the same elements in the second section are the first item, the 271, uh...
Yes.
Hang on a second, I want to check marks next to this. FS-91, the weed eater, the brush blade kit, and the pole saw?
Yes.
Okay. And the title I came up with on that one is just over $1,600?
Uh huh.
Okay. And then the third section, what did I do? Third section, it's the first item?
That's the, yes, the first item, which would be the 271, and then the weed eater and the brush blade kit. But it didn't have, they don't have the pole saw attachment, and they don't sell the, they don't sell the one that is interchangeable like the KN-91 that we can get from Advantage Sales. It's made to interchange the heads and shafts.
Okay. And that Ace Hardware does not have onsite service, is it?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's my understanding they have to send everything out.
Okay, but Advantage does have onsite service?
Yes.
Okay, so the total for the Advantage is $1,255, the total for KNG is $1,602, the total for Ace Hardware is $1,176?
Yes.
Okay.
But that doesn't give you the pole saw on Ace Hardware.
Okay.
You've got less equipment.
Okay, so for, basically for $80 more in Advantage, we get everything we need?
Yes.
And onsite service?
Yes.
Okay, and all this stuff comes with some sort of warranty represented?
It's steel, I would imagine so. I didn't ask exactly what the warranties are, but... And I'm sure like everything else, you can get added warranties for a fee.
And you were talking about allocating money from the, this is from the $50,000 road grant?
Yes.
From this? And we have money in that account?
Yes.
Or in that?
That money was put into the, oh, which account was it? One of the grant accounts, and it's transferred over as we use it.
Okay.
$62.44.
Thank you. There'll be, that $6,000 on materials will be coming out of that as well.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we acquire from Advantage Sales and bottom, the MS-271, 519, the KN-91 combo powerhead at 380, weed eater head at 80, pole saw at 220, and brush blade at 55, for approximately $1,255.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move to a purchase, the weed eater and chainsaw, and pole saw and brush blade. Moving on to new business, cell phone for public works employee.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about earlier, that we can add the public works phone to the, to the police department phone for approximately $104 a month.
And we budgeted one...
We budgeted $125 for the police department. And that includes a brand-new telephone for the public works. The reasoning behind him having his own phone for stuff is when, since Garmin is not local, if there's an issue, he can go check it out and report to them, kind of like what Caleb was doing. If it's, he can take pictures, he can call them, tell them what he's finding, so they can make a determination if they need to send a crew right away, or if it can wait till the next morning. Also, when we have citizens calling for things, if he's out and about and I need a trash can delivered or something, I need to be able to reach him to do 10 million odd and end things, because he's not going to be sitting at the office. That man stays busy.
Ends up being a time saver?
Yes, definitely. Most definitely. Because he's only here part-time, so if something happens after he's left for the day, I need to be able to reach him in case we've got an emergency that comes up.
And you said that money's already budgeted under the general budget?
Yes, we had budgeted $125 for the police department's phone, and we can get both of them for $104. There may be a little bit of tax there, but it'll be under the $125 that we budgeted for one phone. We'd be able to get two. That plan includes up to four phones that can be added. I believe there's a, for the first time, there's a $38 activation fee.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the monthly expenditure of $104 plus tax on cell phones for public works employee and police department.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We move to approve the cellphone for public works employee. Move to B, consider slash discuss authorization to issue request for proposals for administrative and planned development services for the Community Development Block Grant.
I believe I've included an email for you guys. If I didn't, I've got a copy of it. Grant Works contacted me last Friday and said that they have a zero match grant that the city would qualify for. It would pay for doing a new comprehensive plan that was, like what was done before, that expires in '26. It would include doing all of the water and collection maps, the city zoning maps, the city, city limit maps, and everything would be in part of that comprehensive plan. We are required to have the distribution and the collection maps brought up to date by TCEQ as soon as possible. That is one of the violations we're under currently. They do understand that those things take time. You can't pull it out of your hat, so they're working with us as long as we can show we're making progress in getting that, that item addressed. But this would help get that addressed, plus get us the new comprehensive plan that we need, and it would cost the city nothing because the grant would cover the fees.
Just in case y'all didn't hear that, that's no cost to the city.
It's mitigation.
Oh, thank you. Anything you want to add?
You don't get that? You got that?
Thank you all. Mayor, Council, my name is Rob with Grant Works. Like she said, no out-of-pocket expense on this. This stems from 2015, 2016 floods. There, you're about to have your audits up to date. You have zoning, and you're part of the county's hazard mitigation plan, so that's the qualifications. You're going to go out, authorize for RFPs, you'll get those back in award, and then we would move forward with application if we were...
All right, thank you. Any more questions? I didn't mean to disturb. Any more questions?
Oh, no.
All right, thank you. Real quick, and, or, Mr. Hamilton, this might be for you. I'm curious, so comprehensive plans, is there, is there a requirement for those? It seems, it's my understanding that there's a periodic requirement that those be updated, but I want to make sure we know what those are.
So, it's just like, what your distribution is, are you up to date? It's basically a maybe TCEQ.
Okay.
It doesn't have a lot of reports and everything, but is your distribution system consistent with your CNN, and are you going to be able to do it? If not, then why do you need to get it online?
Okay. Can you, can you advise, do we know what the date was for the previous one? And you said 2026?
It expires in 2026. I can't remember. I can tell you real quick, because I'm not, nope, sitting in here.
I just know if my driver's license expires in 2026, I want to make sure I have an appointment at the DMV before it expires.
Plan ahead of that.
Yeah.
Community development plan was done in 2007 to 2026. Probably outdated.
Well, I don't want to overcomplicate this, but does it need to be?
If, if there's no, if there's no cost, I don't see no harm in this. If it's not hurting the city, and it's just helping the city, yeah, I don't, do we need to vote? Is that something, clearly we got to vote on it.
Yes, you'll have to. Okay.
All right.
I make a motion that we authorize to issue request for proposal for RFP for administrative and planned development services for the Community Development Block Grant mitigation, administered by the Texas General Land Office, GLO, and...
Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to C, report for audit for 2022 and 2023 by Juan, Santa Anna. Oh, I believe he gave us a report earlier. He wants to do a little more in-depth.
Yeah, there's a report right here.
Copies of the draft report have been ready distributed. I would like to point out that if you take a look at the financial year 2022 and compare that to the fiscal year '23 draft report that you have at hand, you will see that there's increased, an increase in the information being provided. Starting, if we go to page number one, that's the independent auditor's report, that would be the only piece of information that belongs to the auditor. The rest of the report is responsibility of management of the city. So, the report that you are looking at is a clean report. That means that there is, there are no significant modifications as to the information being presented therein. That report states the responsibilities of management as well of the auditor's responsibilities. Management is responsible for the preparation and for presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, and for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal controls relevant to the preparation and presentation of financial statements that are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. On the next paragraph, it details our responsibility as auditors, and that is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error, and to issue an auditor's report, such as this, that includes our opinions. Reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, and it's not absolute. That means that our work is based on samples. It doesn't entail looking at 100% of the transactions. So, basically, moving on to page two, it details which are, or which is, the required supplementary information included herein. That includes the management discussion or analysis, a budgetary comparison information for the general fund, and the pension and OPEP, which is, which stands for Other Post-Employment Benefit Information, listed in the Table of Contents. And those are schedules that are included as part of the financial statements as we go along. Moving on to, if you would please go to page, let's move a bit forward, to page 16. We're going a bit further, because that's how we do the audit and also prepare the report. We go from the back to the front. And that, the explanation for that is that these are the fund-level financial statements. That means that we are looking at the general fund, or the governmental funds, and after the governmental funds, we present the proprietary funds. The proprietary funds are included in page 20. A proprietary fund works as a private entity. That means that it provides its own revenue. It provides services, in this case, and then gets paid for such, as we charge, the city charged the customers for those. The, in page 21, you have the, what we call the PNL, which is the operations, the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position for the business-type activities or the proprietary fund. At the top, you see the operating revenues, which are the charges for services, and then the list of operating expenses. And below the operating expenses go the non-operating, which includes the interest income or interest earnings, and the interest expense paid by the fund during the year. The result of the, of these, before transfers, it was an excess of expenses of $234,000 approximately. After that, transfers in of approximately $95,000 yielded an ending deficit of $140,000 approximately. Therefore, that decreased the net position for the year from 1.4 million to 1.3 billion right there. If we go back to page 20, we chose the balance sheet for the proprietary fund. As you see, it is divided, starting with the current assets, which would be the most liquid assets, including cash, the accounts receivables. It includes also leasing... It includes also leases receivables, which are mainly composed of the rental income that you the city receives or the from the antennas from A T and T. And it also includes the restricted cash and cash equivalents that are specifically must be specifically used for maintenance and specific works. Below that, you will find in the non-current assets, capital assets, the net pension asset, and finally, the deferred outflows of resources that those deal with specifically the pension and the O P E P plans. Liabilities normal normally consist of the accounts payable, customer deposits that are related to the water and sewer operations, the current portion of the amounts payable for the notes payable and the C O S, which stands for the certificates of obligations. Then below that, you will find the non-current portion for those notes and the certificates, deferred inflows of resources for also pertain to the pension and O P E P. And in this case, it includes also the leases. And at the end, the net position, which classifies the remaining portion as amounts invested in invested in capital asset, the amounts restricted for capital projects, and finally, the unrestricted amounts, which can be used at the discretion of the of the city for any kind of general purpose. Moving back, going back to page 16. Page 16 is basically the balance sheet of the general fund. If you compare this to fiscal year 22, you're going to see a new column right there labeled special revenue. The reason for that is it is related to the home program. So it tells that there is a restriction for the usage of those funds. So you would see that as well as in the statement of revenues expenditures and changes in fund balance in page 18, you will see the activity held during the year for those purposes as well in a separate column apart from the general fund. Everything else goes in the general fund. Okay? So that's another another change from prior year. In prior year, there were some funds that had been received for such program, but they had not been used. So therefore, with that column, you're earmarking specifically which funds are restricted for the home program. Okay? That's basically it. Any questions so far? Okay. So basically, the general fund composed, if we go to the revenues at the top, the property taxes, sales tax, franchise taxes, the intergovernmental, it is the split between the home program in the special revenue and the $50,000 come from the C D V G. That's Community Development Broad Grant, which was the Main Street project betterments that have been coming over from 2022. The expenditures classified as general government, public safety and public works, debt service, that will be for the principal payment of one of the notes payable that's recorded in the general fund. And you would see the transfers out of approximately $95,000 that went to the water and sewer. So that's basically resulting in a decrease in the in a fund balance of approximately $144,000. And that takes us to a final fund balance of 100,359 at the end of the page. From from there, if we move to page 12, that's what I meant when we go from the back to the front. Basically, these are what it is called the government wide. The government wide includes governmental activities separately from business type activities. In the case of the city, business type activities are purely the water and sewer taken from the back to the front. And then the governmental activities would be what we already saw in the governmental funds and the general fund and the special revenue. That's basically it. The difference between these, between the government wide, if you take a look back at the fund level, would be basically that the government wide includes long term, long term assets and long term liabilities. Fund financial statements only include current assets and current liabilities. That's the main difference and the purpose of presenting at the front, the government wide financial statements. Okay? Any questions as to that explanation? That's what makes governmental entities financial statements a bit more of complexity, this this kind of presentation. Because if you go to a normal business, private entity, you will only see one. You will only see one balance sheet, one income statement and one cash flow. Okay? From here, we can go, you would see the notes to the financial statements, starting on page 23. The notes to the financial statements are pretty similar to prior years. They they explain the framework for the structure of the financial statements, the different types of funds. Page 25, it details what entails the budgetary policy and control, which is standard for governmental entities. And then we go to the financial statement items, which start right there in page 25 with a brief description of the composition of cash and cash equivalents, receivables, payables, inter-fund transactions, property taxes, leases receivable, restricted assets, capital assets, long-term obligations, pensions, and net position, net position and fund balances. That moving on to page 27 and 28. And in page 28, it describes the meaning of what are deferred outflows and deferred inflows. Basically, that's deferall means that there is a timing difference in receiving incoming funds as well as deferred inflows, which are then outflows, I mean, outflows and inflows. So they are on year by year, they are being adjusted back and forth, basically. Moving on to then page 29, there it starts in the notes, the detail for the deposit and investments, property taxes receivable, and it gives a very much more detail of the of those components and what the city has included in such balances. Page 31, you would see the an inclusion of a table for those leases receivables recorded in the balance sheet. That's an addition to this year, so users of the financials can see the meaning of those amounts, which are kind of significant in the government wide financial statements. So moving on, note seven, capital assets, you have a detail of a roll forward is roll forward is scheduled showing beginning balances, which were the prior year's ending balances, additions, deletions, if any, and the ending balances that tie back to the front. There you see a separate table for the governmental activities and the business type activities as well on page 33. Note eight details, long-term debt, which shows balances, payments made during the year and the payments to be made within the next 12 months or next year, which would be 2024 in this case. It also includes in page 34, the maturities of the debt service requirements, which includes the principal and interest for both governmental and business type activities. Page 35 includes a very extensive note explaining the retirement plan, which are amounts that have been split between the general and the proprietary fund. That includes what would be the, in this case, you can see that in page 37 and 38, the city has a net pension asset position, which is not usual. Usually, it's a net pension liability. Okay? And it details the information of those deferred inflows and outflows of resources for the pension plan right there at the bottom of page 38 as well. Page 39 details the O P E P, the O P E P, the other post-employment benefits, which basically deals with health care for certain participants. All of the information included herein, when you read the about the discount rate, sensitivity, sensitivity, changes in the liability and so forth, all of that comes from a report obtained from the D M R S. Okay? So that's public. And that's basically what we summarize in here in this notes. Finally, on page 41, we include a note about risk management with deals very much in a general sense with regards to risks of loss. Note 12 deals with commitments, contingencies, and also subsequent events, which would be the last of those. Moving on to page 43, required supplementary information. There you have a comparison of the general fund budget, original and final, actual, and the most significant variances between both columns. Page 45, those are schedules that also are provided by the reports from T M R S as well, that deals of a detailed year per year of service costs, interest and so forth, dealing with the cost that the city pays for when talking about the pension and the O P E P as well. In page 47, it details the contributions made year after year and the different actuarial assumptions at the bottom of page 47. And page 49 and 50 includes the same information, but in this case for the O P E P liability. And that will be the the last page of your report. Are there any questions? I hope I was as thorough and simple as possible because those financials are very extensive.
Yeah.
Takes a while to prepare. So yes, with regards to fiscal year 24, I have already started and you will have those within the course of either I will think I will end the end in those between the end of this week or the beginning of next week. So yeah, those will be easier, of course. To be precise, I went back to the the schedules. General fund only worth 38 journal entries in 23. Water and sewer were 32 for a total of 70. That's the precise number of journal entries in 23. In 24, there were a lot less because everything corrected here goes good moving forward. Should be good. I had to make some corrections in 24 as well. There were also, I wanted to point out that there were deposits from the water and sewer fund that were directly made into the general fund. So you will see that there would be an increase in the amounts due from the general fund to the water sewer as a result of such. You will see that. So thank you again for the opportunity and.
Thank you for taking the time to come out here and meet with us today. It's starting to get a little peckish over here, guys.
You don't like looking at financial statements?
I wouldn't say it's my favorite.
Yeah, that's a that's a lot of them too.
Yeah.
I make I make a motion that we adjourn.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Yeah. Approve the honor. Make a motion.
So we have to approve it tonight?
It's presented. I don't know how much more timing going to be. It's only two years late.
You're not going to change any of it.
Well, we're not going to absorb it tonight either, right? I mean, it doesn't change it.
Well, is this, is it an action item there? Consider, yeah, it's under, is it under old business?
Under new business.
Under new business.
Report for audit.
Discuss this interaction on the report so you can accept it if you want to under that language.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the report for the audit for 2022, 2023.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guys.
Don't be afraid.
There's only one thing left to do here.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.